Good evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Please let the record reflect that all board members, with the exception of Ms. LaRosa, Mr. Brady, and Ms. Prasato, are present. The announcements. Any members of the public wishing to speak on an agenda, thank you. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes as contained in your backup?
No.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recognition.
Could I invite Dr. Bridgman and Dr. Markwood down to join Miss Geller and my fellow? So this month, we honor the dedicated service of our administrative team, our principals, directors, assistant principals, and coordinators. This is my fifth opportunity as superintendent to recognize the members of Wyassa, the West Islip Association of School Administrators. Over these five years, we've explored many opportunities together, and we've met many challenges despite the complexity of the work. Tonight, I'd like to take this occasion to thank you, all of you, for your extraordinary leadership and passion, and applaud your commitment to children. You have a tremendous responsibility that comes with choosing to be stewards of our schools, and it is respected and appreciated. So, on behalf of the Board of Education and the community, I would ask Ms. Geller to present Dr. Bridgman and Dr. Markwood with this certificate in recognition of the dedicated service to our students, faculty, staff, and community. So, thank you.
Why am I taking a picture?
Oh, Joanne's happy. Oh, Jean, is that you, Jean? I can't see. I took my glasses off.
That's actually good.
Oh, it's led you. I can't see without.
You're supposed to tell me.
I took off to take a picture.
Good. Take a picture.
This is Markwood and Bridgman. You might.
Yes, I'll send it to you. Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you all for joining us this evening.
Personnel, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Geller. So our first order of business tonight is for me to recommend to you the retirement of our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Wendy Duffy. Mrs. Duffy came to West Islip in 2005 and has certainly made her mark. I will save all of the flowery stuff for our meeting in July, but I'd like to say that it has been a pleasure to work with Mrs. Duffy, as she possesses a high degree of personal and professional ethics and integrity, and has a wealth of knowledge that supports the efficient and effective functioning of the business office and the district at large. Anything you see here, she had a hand in, because she signs all those checks. So it is bittersweet to ask for a motion for the approval of the retirement of Wendy Duffy, effective July 30th, 2018.
Discussion? I will also have more to say as we get closer, Mrs. Duffy, but on behalf of myself and the board, working with you for a long time now, as I have, professionally and personally, has been an absolute pleasure. Your professionalism, your knowledge, your guidance has been invaluable. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Second order of business that is such a wonderful thing tonight, and also gives me great pleasure to recommend tenure for Michael Giacchetti, Assistant Principal, effective December 1st, 2017. To quote Dr. Markwood's administrative report on tenure, "Mr. Giacchetti has laid a solid foundation while at Udall. He has been a quality addition to the Udall Road Middle School and the community. I couldn't agree more." May I have a motion for the approval of the tenure appointment of Michael Giacchetti, Assistant Principal, effective December 1st, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations.
More good news. May I have a motion for the approval of a childbearing leave of absence for Melissa Morales, School Counselor, effective October 26th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a childbearing leave of absence for Nicoleen Morrell, Mathematics, effective November 2nd, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a childbearing leave of absence for Nicoleen Morrell, Mathematics, effective November 2nd, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And anyone that knows Ms. Morrell knows she's extremely well organized. She did give birth to a beautiful baby boy two days ago, I think. Could have been yesterday. It was two days ago. And I think she was in labor for all of an hour, so typical name.
And she passed it, who did like 15 days.
Picture. So we wish her much love with her new little addition to the family. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Kristen Barber, Cafeteria Aid, effective November 13th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Ken Jay, Networking Systems Technician, effective November 28th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Patricia Love, Special Education Aid, effective November 13th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Diane Green, Special Education Aid, effective November 9th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Christina Rubiglio, Cafeteria Aid, effective October 31st, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute custodian Donald Neveson, effective November 13th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute paraprofessionals, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute Special Education Aid, Kristen Barber, effective November 13th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the contingent appointment of Suzanne Camilleri, Clerk Tykis, effective December 4th, 2017?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the High School Club Advisors for the 2017-18 school year, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Udall Road Middle School Club Advisors for the 2017-18 school year, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2017-18 winter high school coaches, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the appointment of the Instructional Swimming Family Swim Program personnel for the 2017-18 school year, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Homebound Instructors, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And may I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teaching assistants, as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns, and Dr. Rulinker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So this Tuesday, we had our superintendent's conference day. We offered a number of professional development opportunities to not only our teachers, but our teaching assistants and aides. The focus at the elementary level was on digital resources for intervention, research, social, emotional learning, the new next generation ELA and math standards, as well as emergency response training. The middle and high school faculty participated in a variety of activities from skills evaluation, cultural awareness, argument-driven inquiry, transitions, and developing authentic assessments. And some of our departments had specialized with regional associations, and they were at district workshops as well. Now, as reported last month, we have begun the process for our one-to-one deployment of Chromebooks for our students in Beach Street and Udall Road Middle Schools. This Monday, we successfully moved to a wireless platform in both schools. And yesterday, our sixth graders received their Chromebook to take home to charge and bring in Ready to Learn today. I have to tell you, I got to see a few of the students as they were receiving their Chromebooks, and it was like their birthdays times 100. They were just so excited about having this device for them and learning in the Google environment. And today was no exception. Kids came in Ready to Learn, and they were ready to use their Chromebook, and the teachers were ready to use the same model in redefining how to use technology for instructional purposes. Students, before they received their Chromebook, they do go through instruction on digital literacy, such as the appropriate uses of technology, social media, digital databases, virtual collaboration, as well as citizenship reduction to the rights and responsibilities of cyberbullying, legality of online materials, digital footprints, privacy, and safety. And the teachers are now being in the process of being trained on the use of GoGuardian, which is a resource that allows teachers to closely monitor student utilization of the Chromebooks in their classroom. And recently, we have high school launched a news production through their collaboration between video production and public speaking classes. Through the efforts of Ron Weber, an engineering technology teacher, and Tina Schaefer, our public English teacher for the public speaking course, the students developed the West Islip High School Light News, and they provided news segments and current events and announcements to the faculty and students at the high school. So the first production aired last week on Friday, and plans to eventually become a weekly broadcast. So the students, I think, can best speak for themselves, so I'd like to share with you the video clip. I think you're finding it really exciting, insightful, and it's interesting to see about what topics they chose to share with their classmates. So without any further ado...
Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, zero. Okay, these away. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to the West Islip High School Light News for November 30, 2017. This broadcast is coming to you from our studios on the first floor of the high school. Attention to all GSA members, there will be a meeting in room 206 after school. We'll be filling the showcase with art, so bring a pencil and some artsy friends. New members are always welcome. Come on down to West Islip Idol Friday, November 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Tickets will be sold by West Islip Idol participants, Class of 2019 members, and at the door for a price of $10. We hope to see you all there. Trick or Treat. The class of 2018 is celebrating Halloween this year by selling boob bags for $5 each. Send your friends or your teachers a Trick or Treat this year. Please go to the downstairs library, the main office, guidance, or C.A. class officer to purchase one at the Halloween. West Islip students with heart are collecting peanut butter and jelly, ground beef and lunch bags, juice boxes, and snack items for their PB and J game set to take place on November 18th in the city. All items donated can be left in room 298 or by the attendance window. Last day to drop off is November 15th. The lunches will be made on the 16th of November. Today is a blue day. Have a really great day.
Many Americans celebrate Halloween every year by dressing up in costumes and going from house to house, knocking on doors, and calling out Trick or Treat, hoping to have their bags filled with candy. Traditions of Trick or Treat began in the Middle Ages when children and sometimes poor adults would dress up in costumes, go around door to door begging for food or money in exchange for songs and prayers. Halloween evolved from all hollows. It originated from the pagan holiday operating the dead. Halloween 2017 just passed, so I hope everyone had a lit time.
Daylight savings time. Most of the United States begins daylight savings time at 2:00 a.m. on the second Sunday in March, and reverse the standard time on the first Sunday in November, November 5th. In the United States, each time zone switches at a different time. In the European Union, summertime begins and ends at 1:00 a.m.
The IT Rodney Playcast is organic, contains the genetic makeup of every living organism. Most DNA molecules consist of two bio polymers, strands coiled around each other to form a double healing shape. Each strand of DNA is composed of four nitrogen-containing nucleobases, cytosine, guantine, adenine, and five P. Within eukaryotic cells, DNA is organized into long structures called chromosomes. During cell division, these chromosomes are duplicated in the process of DNA replication, providing each cell with its own complete set of chromosomes. We are still in the process of DNA research, and with each second of research, we get closer and closer to treating and curing diseases like cancer and Alzheimer's.
On Friday, the temperature will be 70 degrees and sunny, but there are less showers in the afternoon. On Saturday, the high temperature will be 59 degrees and cloudy. On Sunday, it will be 59 degrees and chance of showers. Have a good evening.
So now, I also failed to mention, though, Mr. Bonomo also helped the students. He devised a teleprompter for them as well. So that was their first production. They put it all together. It was all their research, all their ideas, and I think they did a great job. So, that's it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Rulink. Okay. Mr. Mitchell will report on the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, uh, Finance Committee... Finance Committee met on November 7th, 2017. Committee members present are Scott Brady, Vaughn McGinnis, and myself. Board members in attendance are Steve Gill and Kevin O'Connell. Administrator's present are Bernard Burnes, Superintendent Wendy Duffy, Assistant Superintendent for Business. Others present are June Mellon, Treasurer, Private Nissella, Credit Suisse Agent, Pat Pompton, Internal Claims Order. Purpose of the meeting was to review warrants for the month and discussion of current fiscal matters. The meeting report came to order at 7:26. Treasury report, first was the School District Funds for September 2017, and the extracurricular for June, July, and August, September 2017. They were presented and accepted by the committee. Next was the payroll summary report, September 2017. It was presented and accepted by the committee. Next came the financial statements for June and September 2017. Financial statements for the period of 7-1-2016 to 6-30-2017, and then also 7-1-17 to 9-30-17, were presented. The Internal Claims Order Report, it was presented and accepted by the committee. The System Manager Audit Trail for October 2017 was presented and accepted by the committee. The payroll certification for 10-6-17 and 10-20-17 was presented and accepted by the committee. The review of warrants, the Finance Committee received the warrants. Review of Board of Agenda of Finance Items, the approval of budget transfers, presented and accepted by the committee for submission to the Board. We have the approval of surplus, the transfer page in 2002 Chevy Sedan, number 405, plate number AG7486, then number 2G1WF55K029359608. We have the approval of 2017 to 2018 sex car contracts. First was the Achieve Beyond Phonograms, ACDS, ACLD, All About Kids, Mid-Aid Therapy Associates, the Anderson Center for Autism, a center, Brookwell Center of Children's Services, Building Lots Development Preschool, Cleary School for the Deaf, Development Disabilities Incorporated, Hatchdon Little Villum School, Henry Visserdy School, Trust Kids Early Childhood Learning Center, Kids in Action in Long Island Incorporated, Leeway School, Metro Therapy, Mountain Lake Academy, New England Center for Children Incorporated, the New Interdisciplinary School, the NASA Suffolk Services for Artistic, NISOC Incorporated Suffolk, Opportunity Preschool, Suffolk County Department of Social Services. And today, we have the approval of contracts for the Comback Union Free School District for the fall of 2017 and 2018. Also for the approval of contracts for the Deer Park Union Free School District for 2016 to 2017. And also the approval of contracts for the Deer Park Union Free School District for 2017 to 2018. Wendy Duffy reviewed with the committee the financial statement summary for June, for June, of 7-1-2016 to 6-30-2017. Meeting was adjourned at 7:44.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Connell will discuss the meeting of the Education Committee.
Thanks, Ms. Geller. Good evening, everybody. Education Committee met tonight or later here at District Office. Committee members present are myself, Ms. Geller, Mrs. Burns, and Dr. Rulink. Other board members present were Mr. Mahalik and, in the second half of the evening, Mr. McGinnis. The committee reviewed the professional development opportunities provided to faculty and staff on Superintendent's Day this past Tuesday. We had a chance to see the agenda. There was certainly a wide variety of offerings that were given. It was an impressive agenda that certainly looked like it kind of went busy for the day. The committee next reviewed and approved the following: Course Name Changes in Curriculum Writing Project for 2018-19 School Year. The new course names are English Twelve Hall Revision, Media Literacy, Writing for College and Career, Writing 114 Creative Non-Fiction Writing Super Course, Spanish Italian ASL 1B, Spanish for Conversation and Culture, Calculus, SAT Creep and B, Video Production, Electricity, Electronics, Introduction to Automotive Technology, Technology 7, Technology 8, Review of Science Curriculum, Science 7, and Skills in Science Research. Next, the committee reviewed several proposals for a digital and structural upgrade to the planetary. Proposals include improvements made to the dome projector, lighting, and sound, as well as increased digital library, and this will be discussed further at future meetings. Lastly, the committee reviewed recommendations for graduation requirements from the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee recommended the following: Seniors will carry a minimum course load of 6.5 credits plus PE and to schedule lunch with sufficient credits to qualify for graduation. Seniors with parental permission to run late or leave early must also have good attendance history and must have a paid or unpaid work reason with some type of career connection, for example, the job coaching, or an internship, et cetera. And community service revised to the expectation that all students will complete community service as a requirement for graduation. Students would be required to fulfill a certain amount of community service and/or involvement with different activities equated to points, and this, we look forward to receiving further updates from the Advisory Committee on this. And the meeting was adjourned at 7:55 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. And Mr. Mitchell will please discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Buildings and Grounds Committee Committee, may adjourn member. Now, November 8, 2017, time is started at 7:50 p.m., and location is the District Office Boardroom. Members in attendance are Scott Brady, myself, Kevin O'Connell, Steve Geller, Vaughn McGinnis. Others in attendance are Bernard Burnes, Wendy Duffy, James Bossing, Gary Robinson of BBS, and Fred Seber of BBS. The committee information that was given to us was a first on the bond projects. Mr. Robinson and Mr. Seber reviewed the completed scope of work from Phase 1, 2A, and 2B. Bid for bond projects in Phase 2C, which is the Lexington-Glazing District Line, and the classroom security lock sets at the high school, were approved on October 13th. The committee discussed the updated SED bid process that could streamline the approval line. Mr. Robinson will attend the December Committee meeting to provide advice and plan for the security vestibules at the elementary buildings. Tenants. Divine Rhythms has requested to add condition to the Westbrook Cafeteria, which is used as an outdoor room. Before moving forward, the committee requested the cost of the meter, cafeteria, and any associated costs to the district to maintain the air conditions, which would be placed on the roof of Westbrook. Next online was cameras. Approximately 13 exterior cameras were recently added to the ground of District Line. The locations were selected based on security concerns and recent incidents. Four exterior and interior cameras will be added throughout the school year. Next comes the Bayview Playground. The Bayview PTA has requested approval to donate funds to pay all costs associated with the installation of a dog up hedge on its playground. In the interest of Fannis and Equity District Line, the board committee members have requested a little more information. And next was the Westbrook Parking Lot. The district is attempting to schedule asphalt paving of an area in the Westbrook Parking Lot, but the timing conflicts with tenants' needs. Project may need to be delayed until late spring, early summer, or another less pressing time for the tenants. That concluded our meeting and adjourned at 9:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the Committee on Special and Preschool Special.
Thank you. Committee met this morning, November 9th, in District Office. Committee members present are myself, Administrator's present are Jean Dowling and Superintendent Burns. The meeting began at approximately 8:00 a.m. As usual, we reviewed the CSE and CPSC recommendations and modifications for the month. It was a delight month, and all was in order. We did have some discussion on professional development and class sizes, and the meeting adjourned at approximately 3:00.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. And Mr. O'Connell will discuss the meeting of Policy. And Mr. O'Connell will discuss the meeting of Policy Committee.
Thank you. Policy Committee met this past Tuesday, eleven seven, here at District Office. Committee members present are myself and Mr. Brady. Board members in attendance were Mr. Geller, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. Mahalik. Administrator is present are Mrs. Burns and Dr. Ruland. And purpose of the meeting was to discuss revisions to various policies. The meeting was called order at seven P.M. This will be the first reading of the following policy updates that were reviewed and approved by the Policy Committee this past Tuesday. Policy four two one two, District's Table Organization. Policy seven two one three, Use and Dissemination of Test Results and Other Educational Materials. Policy seven three six two, Academic Contiguity. Policy seven six two oh, Students with Disabilities Participating in School District Programs. And, Mr. Geller, if you agree it's appropriate, I would recommend to entertain a motion to wait for the second reading.
Very well. A motion, please? So, discussion? Aye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and now can I have a motion to accept the policies as presented? So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And Mr. Haran will discuss the meeting of the Health and Wellness Committee.
Good evening. Our total Health and Wellness meeting focused primarily on the logistics of coordinating our first annual West Islip Color Run. Today's Health and Wellness meeting, this morning, that was focused on debriefing on that event. And I'm happy to say that the first annual West Islip Color Run was a tremendous success with over nine hundred and fifty participants, and was a great community event, a affordable community event that raised some money for the Health and Wellness Committee, and I think everyone that participated had a great time with the event, and the Health and Wellness Committee felt the same, and we're looking forward to conducting the second annual Color Run next fall. In addition, we started to discuss our upcoming newsletter that we coordinate every January and February, traditional topics such as social media, social host law, texting and driving, and we are looking into the challenges of adolescent mental health issues that many of our students across the United States are starting to suffer from, and see if we can come up with some type of strategies and educational programs that will help minimize that moving forward in the future. In terms of new business, we discussed a presentation, we're going to look into a presentation called Screen Ager, again dealing with social media and mental health issues. In addition, we recently partnered with the New York State Governor Safety Committee. They partnered actually with Section Eleven, and we are trying to minimize risk to students regarding driving and being on the road, so trying to minimize texting and driving, recommending seatbelt, and obviously not drinking and driving. You'll probably see some of those posters around the high school that were recently put up. And lastly, we are looking forward to our mindfulness training that's going to take place here in West Islip in April. We'll be meeting again on Tuesday, December twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Okay, Mrs. Duffy, Financial Matters and Business Matters.
Treasurer's report on the balance in our accounts on August thirty-first was forty-six million, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, and the balance in our accounts on September thirty was forty-one million, one hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Next item is budget transfers, and a motion to approve budget transfer number thirty-four thirty-five through number thirty-four thirty-eight.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We have a motion to accept the surplus of the two thousand two Chevy Sedan.
So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We have a motion to approve the following contracts: The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen contract with Comback School District, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen contract with Deer Park School District, and the two thousand seventeen, eighteen contract with Deer Park.
So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
We have a motion to accept the contracts for the set cards for seventeen eighteen.
So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Can I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement dated November third, two thousand seventeen, between the West Islip Union Free School District and the West Islip Tire Association? So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the Building Emergency Response Plans? So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And can I have a motion for the approval of the Winkler Amendment to Contract? So, discussion, this is a one-year extension with the same terms as previous. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mrs. Burns?
I'd just like to remind everyone that the district is closed tomorrow as we observe Veterans Day and pay tribute to all of the men and women who have fought in our battles in defense of our democratic principles that we all enjoy today. We may not always agree, but we certainly have the right to express them. So, to them, I say thank you to all of our veterans. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Okay, anybody that doesn't know, our football team has advanced to the quarterfinals.
Semi.
Semi, I bet. We were victorious in the quarters last weekend with a resounding victory over Newfield, and we'll be playing this Saturday. There were plenty of seats available, so come on out, cheer on the home team. Okay, anybody have anything else? No? All right. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Out? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session where we may discuss personnel, negotiations, and litigation. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene to public session in the District Office formally to consider any changes which are voted as required, of course, of all methods of the public or voluntary tenement in public session. So, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Enjoy your weekend.